Off of twenty-three and they're traveling with snowmobiles on there and ruining my, my lens.
So they're going into your property?
Right.
More than you would like?
Pardon?
More than you would like that they're into your property? Have you tried calling the sheriff's department?
Yes, last year where they went beyond the trees, which is about twenty-five, thirty feet off because, uh, Bob Holt didn't get up his, uh, fence there on Connaught Snow and, uh, and there's a crew that always comes through with the snowmobiles and they're on my yard going through.
Okay.
And, uh, it causes me to fix it up.
Right.
Uh, you know, after the three feet easement, you know, so...
Maggie, do you know if that's a snowmobile, uh, or a snowmobile trail?
Oh, it isn't.
It is? Okay. Are the snow runners coming in?
Coming from twenty-five down seventh and then down Egrit Lane to thirty.
Okay.
So it's a county trail or?
It's on the DNR.
On the DNR map?
Yeah.
Okay. We may have to work with the snowmobile club and see what they can do. So right now, we can't take any action because it's not on the agenda.
Well, that's okay. I'm just, I'm just, uh, mentioning what happens.
Yeah.
Or, or, like, like last year, it really was bad. I know we had a hell of a lot of snow, but...
Yep, right, right. So we'll add it to our...
See, the biggest deal is I got a four, uh, deal about twenty, thirty feet off of the road. And I mentioned to the sheriff that they could hit that and he says, "I'm liable." Because I haven't got those two wheel signs up.
Can't put anything in the right way and block it?
Pardon?
Can't put anything in the right way and block the snowmobiles?
I'm not blocking the snowmobiles.
In your yard?
Because they got, they're on, on my property after four feet easement there.
Now you said they're coming about thirty feet up is what he's thinking. So we'll add it to our next work, uh, work session and discuss it and then we'll, uh, work with the snowmobile club and see what we can do and then we'll have Janelle or Maggie get back to you.
Well, see, like last year, I mentioned it and, uh, I called the sheriff on because they went that far through.
Yeah.
And, uh, he said, "Why don't you put up a snow fence?" That's why I, I would like to get a permit to put a nine-foot chain link fence all the way up.
Well, we, we can help you with the permit for a fence, but not nine feet, but, um...
Well, I want to get it high enough so they don't get across.
Right, right.
Because last year, some of them come through with the snowmobiles and they find that snow bank there by Bob Holt's and that was about twenty feet high.
Okay. Yep, we'll look at it. We'll talk about it at a work session. We'll try to work with the snowmobile club.
Well, whatever. I'm just mentioning what, what it's gonna...
Perfect. No, we appreciate that. We need to hear some of this feedback, so, um...
And it costs, it causes me money to fix up beyond, uh...
Right.
Three feet easement over.
Yeah. And it may come down to a fence has to be put in or the sheriff has to deal with, you know, if people are breaking the law, you may have to go to the sheriff, but we'll certainly discuss it and see what we can do to help.
Well, I hope so that the sheriff will listen once.
Uh, we can help with that too, I, possibly.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda, on the contention for further discussion? Nope. Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That'll take us to a public hearing for Fieldstone Third Edition Drainage and Utilitiesman Resolution ten dash eight dash eighteen dash thirty-two. So I'll look for a motion to open public hearing?
Oh, yeah, yep.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, to open the public hearing for Fieldstone Third Edition Drainage and Utilitiesman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is open. John, do you want to give a quick overview and then we'll take public?
Yeah, I can do that real quick.
Thank you.
So what we have here is a couple lots that were planted in Fieldstone Edition, um, twelve years ago on that first edition lot too. And there was two outlots planted on the north side of Bob Holt's lot again in the seventy point six street that's up to the, uh, edge of the city boundary. Um, after the time, the Alvinian purchased both of the outlots and is looking to combine them with two lots that are adjacent to it. So it'll be lot seven of two and lots one of three and the outlots are all lot two and two. And from a planning standpoint, it's a pretty straightforward deal. Uh, one of the, uh, people that are buying the house going on the existing lot, one of three, which will be lot two of one and the third edition flat, is also looking to attach it back to the house all day, which is across, which is a different line. Uh, so in order to do that, we have to vacate the drainage utilities on these common lot lines and re-dedicate them on the new flat. So what we're doing is we're vacating all the drainage utilities on the existing lot and then on the new flat, they'll be re-dedicated and that's a common respect, common lot line between the lot, whole lot will have a drainage utility even attached to it, kind of like the yard. Um, as you see on the agenda, we also have a preliminary final flat coming out later on, I got on the agenda. So all three of these items are kind of in, um, the same situation here. Uh, the flat itself, it's all standard, so it doesn't have any ordinance, uh, because in the community comment, it's about change of the, uh, it's also a temporary turnaround for seven point roll. Uh, that the Alvinian will be required to dedicate an easement holder for a turnoff purpose, which that easement will be in favor of the city. Uh, so the city can maintain that, follow up, feel covered, and do. At one point in the future, seven point extended to the north on that property, the area's developed, that turnoff will weigh that easement expire at that point, in that place, in that area, it's a part of the city's, uh... So with that said, um, it's pretty straightforward here. Um, we have three items to look at.
Now, this is the correct map, right?
That is correct.
So what's, we kind of, so...
This is just an older map.
There's the planted property and now we're moving the drainage utility. Can you kind of show on the map how that's hap, how that's happening?
So if you go back to that aerial portal, um, so what it is, right now, this is a lot right here.
Yeah.
And there are drainage utilities that run along this line and along this line. And they also run on the exterior boundaries of the property. So what we're doing is we're vacating all these drainage utilities on both the outlot and these lots. And then new ones will be dedicated on the exterior, which means there won't be one here anymore, which means they can build in this area of those two lots. So basically, we're taking away the ones that are there, putting new ones in place, which will be plowed on the actual, uh...
To, to accommodate those two end ones?
Correct.
Because those outlots would not be built on otherwise, or...
Well, if these, if this property was developed up here, these outlots were planned for to be combined with future lots, but since they're just kind of remnants, so they could also be combined like this either way. So this won't extend the lot line just being this line versus extension that line. This is that temporary turnaround that we talked about, consists on private property. We have to have an easement over that for maintenance, uh, kind of things like that. So drainage utilities will just get replanted in the lot. And the final flat, in place does show that, um, so everything's that's that kind of...
And then those two outlots become part of phase two?
Phase three.
Oh, phase three?
Then it's actually a third edition.
Okay.
It's already a second edition, so it just becomes part of those lots and they now are built and all for the, uh, the ones in the...
Okay. Okay. Any public comments? Anyone who would like to?
So it's not affecting the, any of the other ones?
No. There's no drainage issues. Nothing's changing physically on the ground. It's just the lot line is actually changing. So no drainage is changing at all. I'm Steve Harecar and I...
If, if you could come up?
I am, uh, the owner of, well, truly the owner of this lot here. The whole idea for us was to give and put a deck out here and that got a nice view there. And we were unable to do that, but the easement that was there. So the builder is, you know, combining those lots for us so that we can cross the line there. Enjoy your nice city of mayor.
Please, yep, come on, say your name and address, please, good.
My name is Jalena Arcorn. My address is eight oh two Egrit Lane in Wilconia. Uh, I'm actually the Realtor working with the Harencars as well as Castle Gate Construction. So, um, I'm helping develop that, those last lots there. So, uh, just a little history of, of what happened. Those two lots were owned by Hartman Communities. And he actually approached the builder, asking if we would please take those over on his behalf. No further development occurred to the north as they had originally intended. And it left them having to kind of maintain or, or be responsible for two outlots that they were not looking at ever developing in the future. Um, and that is why those lots that Castle Gate currently owns and is developing were sold off to Castle Gate. Um, so we looked at the potential of being able to, uh, take those on. Obviously, it was advantageous to, um, our clients here who are building, um, as well as to the person who will be building at lot fifty-four eleven, which is the one on, uh, the west side there. Um, a couple of things that we took into consider, consideration would, would this be beneficial to the community? Um, the answer is yes, because oftentimes with outlots, when they're, they're not being maintained by an association, just become kind of a place for garbage to end up or overgrowth. Uh, previously, neither one of those lots are really having, um, the grass mowed or anything like that. So if you look at, um, the lower side of both of those lots, you'll see an old, overgrowth of vegetation and whatnot. Being able to merge those two lots would ensure that they became part of the property that was sold and that it would preserve the beautification of the neighborhood. Um, I can attest to how the Harencars take care of their yard because I sold their property in Victoria. Um, and they are meticulous with their lawn care and this, this is something that they're really looking forward to. Uh, in addition to that, with the particular design of their house, the patio doors are located on the north end, kind of where you see that easement line on what will be their lot. So, um, it is necessary for them to be able to use the property the way that they would like to, just to be able to put a deck on that side of the house. Um, and at the same time, it took a burden off the previous owner of the lots by having it consolidated and us being able to take responsibility for it from this point forward. So those are the intentions behind the lots.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Maggie, were there any emails that we need to put on record for this?
No.
All right, with nothing else, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing and enter back into regular city council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, that will take us to...
Oh, you would have to approve the resolution.
Is that part of seven A one or is that, uh, that separate from it?
That's, um, that's separate. That would be part of the public, public hearing.
But we approve that outside of the public? I mean, now we...
Yeah, now you would approve it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution ten dash eight dash eighteen dash thirty-two.
I'll make that.
Councilmember makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Senator, thank you. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, Maggie, that will take us to seven A one.
John, go ahead.
John, you want to start, you want to start that up? Yeah, okay.
So, I don't know, we kind of touched on this just a second ago. If this is actually the primary and final flat, typically, a primary flat would run first and the final flat would come second, which would be, because it's a pretty straightforward, central deal. Um, normally, we could actually combine these, but so you're central outlots, the outlots, they don't build the whole, you know, the main, so they won't be applied as part of the lot. Uh, so we have them all here together tonight while we write them. Uh, the primary flat, uh, has four conditions, the engineering comments, uh, the drainage utilities with dedication, uh, which we just did. Uh, the flat name originally was to be changed in the show and expect, but it has been changed in the third. We started taking care of it, the final flat that we also have. And the final flat also had, uh, seven conditions, what we, the training comments, signage, the flat may be adjusted. There is no part dedication, so there's no new lots are being created. Development agreements, uh, potentially done. I could talk to the city attorney because there's no development app as far as street to utilities. No development agreement will be needed. A temporary turnaround easement, uh, has been drafted by the city attorney. That will be signed and recorded along with the final flat. And then the drainage utility even dedication and they have dedicated correct easements on the new flat, uh, based on what they've, they've sold. With that, we have an action applicable to the primary flat and the final flat.
Like, so that typically does not happen in the same night for obvious reasons?
No, typically, it's spread out. It's a pretty straightforward, uh, it's a...
Okay, yeah, so we'll just kind of both take care of it tonight, okay? All right, any clarification? I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution ten dash eighteen, no, ten dash eight dash eighteen dash thirty-three.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution ten dash eight dash eighteen dash thirty-three, the preliminary flat. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution ten dash eight dash eighteen dash thirty-four, the, uh, final flat.
I'll make that motion.
A motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Perfect, thank you. All right, Maggie or John, whoever wants to start out, we'll go to seven A two, please. John, I suppose you can jump right into it.
Yeah, I can start with, um, so just to kind of give you a little background. Uh, back on September thirtieth of two thousand and eleven, FEMA provided, uh, the city with the primary maps. They call them firms. So if you see the word firm, that's what these maps are, the floodplain maps. They've been working on them for quite a while. Kind of remap basically all the counties throughout the state. It's pretty much the whole country that kind of worked on us. So with that in place back then, um, they have now given us the okay that the maps are ready to be approved. So we received a letter here, I think it was back in, uh, September or August, I can't remember the exact date, I just think we now have. Moving things forward and we have until the end of the, September thirtieth to approve these, the ordinance and the ordinance. So what we have here is a new floodplain language, uh, as you said, zoning ordinance and floodplain management chapter along with the new maps. So in your report, I think there's three maps that are actually listed. There's actually more maps that'll be listed in the gold area of the city, so as we do a comprehensive plan, the city expands ma, additional maps in the future may be included up to another three or four, kind of addressing. So with that being said, we have a few different sections of the city code that are addressed. Uh, chapter one fifty-four floodplain management chapter is basically being redone, uh, at this point. So all the language that adjusts and the stuff, kind of updating everything. Uh, with that being revised, we had to update a few other sections of the city code, mostly the zoning ordinance, to make everything consistent. So we have chapter, uh, one fifty-two zoning, uh, definitions section, so we had to update a bunch of definitions in the zoning ordinance to make it consistent with the state. We updated a little bit of language in the shoreline overlay chapters, or a section of the zoning ordinance, I should say, uh, floodplain language regarding floodplain. And also, we updated the alternative energy system, which have a few references to floodplain and allowing fluid energy systems in the floodplain area. So those three chap, or sections of the zoning ordinance of the chapter one fifty-four floodplain management are in front of you today with those changes. The commission reviewed this at their last meeting, they recommended approval of it. Um, so you have all the taxes here in your, um, in the staff report in front of you. So if you have any questions, I can take that, but, uh, I think it should be ready to vote. And once these maps are approved, uh, by the city council, uh, we have to do a checklist with the DNR and they give us continued approval at this point. And the stuff that we have with the industry, uh, once approved here, we provide that information to them and that's officially active this year. And by approving this, it allows the city to stay in, uh, under insurance.
Any other questions for John or clarification on that? And I will look for a motion to approve the tax amendment regarding the floodplain management, uh, tax map as presented. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion, a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, John. Seven B one.
Okay, um, Mayor and Council, uh, I do have Ailers here today, um, just to talk about, we've been doing, this last year, we've been doing a lot of studies about, um, kind of like future, future projects and planning. One of that, one of those has been our, um, pavement management study. And then we also have been having an ongoing stu, uh, discussion on a, um, potential new fire department. Plus, um, we've also talked about, um, switch, transitioning, um, our contracted snow service to public works. And so, right now, I've been kind of talking with Todd at Ailers, um, about our long-term management plan of those projects and kind of how we would fund those. And so he's here today to kind of give us an overview of what that would move, process would be moving forward.
Uh, thanks, Maggie. Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, happy to be here. No baseball today, I see, across the street, so... There's something going on at the fire hall, huh?
Yeah, there's, open house.
Okay, open house. Good, good. Very good. Um, so, so tonight, I, um, Ryan Miles is with me too, just to kind of talk about your, um, investments too, just an update. But, um, I'm, I'm here to talk about, as a municipal advisor, um, about the long-term financial management plan. I think in your packets, uh, you have a proposal from us to provide, um, that type of, of service. I think back in two thousand and seventeen, we, uh, showed you, um, a proposal for, uh, both the financial management plan, which is the general fund, basically, and all your other, uh, funds. You have quite a few funds and your debt service funds and then some sewer water study, but, um, ABDO's doing the sewer water, uh, part of that rate study. Uh, we feel that this, uh, long-term financial management plan, um, that deals with the general fund, the capital equipment funding, the fire truck funds, park improvement funds, street improvement fund and a couple, um, bond debt service accounts is a really good fit for, um, our company, uh, to kind of take it to that next, um, level. Uh, you have, uh, Maggie had sent me via Ryan, uh, when he was here last, just for a staff meeting. Um, you know, kind of what your fire hall financing, uh, project, uh, it looks like, again, some, um, public works equipment and then some larger scale, um, pavement management planning that it looks like it involves some, you know, mill and overlay and then some actual street reconstruction and some other things. Uh, most of that, uh, would be on the, on the levy. Uh, we also, in this, in our study, look at special assessments, uh, and any other, um, type of revenues that we can weave in there to help, uh, keep that, uh, the levy down, you know, and not, or not go up so much. Um, so I think that's a really good strategy. Um, a lot of communities use this. Um, it can be reimbursed from a bond issue too that comes up, um, in the future too. So, you know, there's a cost to do this from our company. Uh, you can pay for it through, uh, through cash and then you can get reimbursed if you, if you would like to do that through a bond issue. Um, if there are any bond issues coming up, uh, that spin off of this plan, uh, it certainly, uh, was, uh, part of the plan. So there's a nexus there, a relationship to the plan to, to a bond issue, uh, for sure. Um, so, you know, I did look at, I remember we did some refinancings a while ago in two thousand and seventeen now. It seems like time flies, right? It's already almost the end of eighteen. Seems like I was just there for that, but, you know, we struck while the air was hot on there and saved us some money. So, we know rates have been going up a little bit, but not too much. And, um, there you, you're a solid double A, you know, from the Standard and Poor's Rating Agency and, um, you know, you're, uh, all the comparables are sort of where, where you'd about be at that, at that double A, um, um, point. Um, but in the report, I had looked too that, um, because, you know, in, in this study, we also look at, um, you know, do you have too much in the reserves, not enough? Uh, what happens if we apply some cash, right, to some of these financings? Uh, whether it's pay-as-you-go cash or right up front. Um, and, uh, so we all want to also make sure that, you know, I think your fund balance policy says to keep at least fifty percent of next year's expenditures in the reserve. Um, you're higher than that. Uh, I think the recommendation in the report, and you score extra points if you keep, uh, a little over seventy or seventy-five percent in there for a city of your size. Um, it's just a larger hit if something happens on the reserve than a larger city can absorb that. So, um, so it would be, and that's a discussion we have with council in the work sessions in this plan too, is, is, uh, you know, how much if that gets a little bit lower and, you know, closer to the fifty percent, what's that going to cost us? And in the rating too, um, able to maintain and what's that going to cost us to, um, if we, if we take some of that too soon, it's, you know, hard to replenish that too, because it's hard to build up all that cash. So that planning tool is, is, has all of that in it. It's got the capital improvement, you know, the CIP wishlist of projects and then just, you know, how to, you know, how to finance it and then just, we want to be mindful of that. That double A credit rating is a great rating. We don't want you to lose it. You're in that's a pretty exclusive group right there in that, in that category. Most smaller cities are in the As, so, so that's good. Uh, we also look at debt dropping off, right, and, you know, all these school referendums that are going around and counties. Two, they issue a lot of bonds, mostly on a tax levy, right? So what they do is we call a wraparound, the levy onto, um, any debt that's dropping off too. So there, it's also going to take a look at, at some opportunities there. So, you know, you have two thousand and fourteen, uh, bond out there and a two thousand and fifteen bond out there. Um, those are a mixture of special assessments and some revenues and some property taxes. But, um, you know, we've got some, um, opportunities in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-six to, uh, find some, um, basically some opportunities there to, to tuck in some more, you know, projects or debt by not lowering that, but keeping it, keeping it the same for the taxpayers, because we don't want their tax rates to go up and down and jump around all over the place. We want to try to keep it steady. Lower, great if we can, but there's a lot still going on and a lot to do, uh, in mayor. So, um, you know, right there, you know, if we play our cards right on that, um, you know, we could almost, uh, you know, there's some, um, some real good opportunities I see to actually not have the tax rate increase go too high. So, and those are discussions we have with the council and just to kind of keep it at, at, uh, you know, at a, at a palatable amount. Um, you know, we can sell bonds in the market, like we always do here, a lot of times in the market. If they're smaller, to local banks also. Um, there's an opportunity to, to fund the fire hall too with some USDA funding as well. It's becoming pretty popular. Um, the rate is, is a little lower than the market, but you can go out forty years as opposed to twenty or twenty-five years. So, um, but, so the annual cash flow is great, but at the end, you pay a lot more in interest. But, you know, those are callable at any time too and you can refinance them. So all of that's going to be looked at in that planning tool to see what's the best, um, fit for the, the city of mayor. And anytime we can pay cash for a project, great. And that could be some of the public works stuff too, might spin off into that and, you know, bond for what we can and pay cash for, you know, what we can too and just make sure it's, um, most efficient way possible, I guess, for you guys to, to get this all into, uh, into the plan. So, you know, it looks like you have some opportunities out there. Uh, quick glance, like I said, um, you know, there's ways to, to get the fire hall done. Uh, pavement management's going to be kind of a trick because, it's going to be tricky because there's three or so components to it. You know, some will have to be pay as you go, you know, some we can bond for. Um, so that will be, um, so that'll be a little bit more of an exercise to go through. That's all in that plan. So, um, and again, the rating agencies, uh, you know, Janelle and, um, Maggie know that it's important to have these planning tools uh, in our back pocket, so it's not just kind of a, a knee-jerk reaction basically to, to, you know, either finance something or pay for it without looking at the whole picture in the, in the city. And you've got some, some pretty good, uh, planning tools already out there, but it's really nice that this came to our attention, that we are able to at least present this to you to, um, actually put this on, you know, um, into a, into a planning tool that you guys can look at, that council can look at too and staff. And we can go through a couple workshops and get this thing, uh, figured out so you really know what the impact is. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or not. I kind of just did a broad brush stroke of this?
I think it's a little overview.
Okay.
I do think there's some benefits, um, you know, to be used, obviously, and, you know, what, what got me in. I know, uh, Councilor McNeely has mentioned, you know, get a handle on how much money we're sitting on, how much we should have that fifty percent or is it that seventy-five?
Right.
And how that affects our bond rating and what does that do for, you know, so?
Mm-hmm.
Stay double A, is it, is it a huge drastic change if we go, go down to A, but we get to free up some of the cash? Maybe the, the, so will you help with that balance?
Yeah, we will. And we'll kind of tell you what to go in, you know, how many basis points... And we'll kind of tell you what to go in, you know, how many basis points or percentage points would be to, for a drop like that. Nobody likes to see a drop. It stays with you for a long time. And it actually gets disclosed to the investors out there for quite a while as well. So, it's almost as if you didn't have a planning tool, that would happen. But if that's part of our strategy, you know, and a reason, right, a method to what we're doing, that certainly could be considered. I think it's really good for you guys to look at all those impacts and there may be a reason to do that.
And will this tool help from general bonds? You know, as we start bonding more and taking out more debt, will that help from our debt to levy percentage, you know, so we're not taking out too much dent or too much debt annually compared to what our budget is, right? You know, will that help manage through some of that also?
It will, it will. Not that you would stop doing what you're doing because you have to move forward, but I think it's a good sense, we'll have a sensitivity analysis on that, too, to show what that is. Because actually on, actually Moody's Investor Services weighs debt more than Standard and Poor's does. So, it's in Moody's, it's 20% of the overall score and Standard and Poor's, it's 10%. So, but I've been in some cities where much smaller ones with a lot of debt and it gets, there is a point where they just say, hey, it's too much. So, you know, the 10% actually kind of maybe in Standard and Poor's' methodology, it starts to kind of creep in and starts to affect the rating. And we also show that, so Standard and Poor's actually backs out any revenue-type bonds that are supported by sewer water revenue or something like that. And it comes off that formula theirs and Moody's not so much. But again, here we're talking, we are talking about, I think, you know, bonds that will impact that particular category.
I think having some of that roadmap, helping us through some of that will be beneficial. Yep. Especially on the debt aspect of it, that we're not taking out too much debt and that that's a high percentage of our levy, I mean.
Yep.
And I know there are some communities who are struggling with that, with their debts, so.
Yep, yep. And what's, I guess, nice about this is we maybe can dovetail it in with the existing debt and show them then, now that as this drops off, this kind of comes in and that doesn't look so severe on here, like you're layering it constantly. So, I think a lot of those explanations help in the, with bond rating as well. So, I think it's a very beneficial plan for you guys. And again, I really appreciate this coming to our attention because it's really, I'll say fun. It's fun for, it's fun for us to get this on a roadmap anyway for you, you folks, we really appreciate. I think if I was, you know, out there, you know, staff or on the council, a lot of these things are always, would be in the back of your mind, where are we, you know, in the whole scheme of things here? What is, how does this affect us? So, hopefully, it'll help you guys with those decisions, so. Are there any other questions for Todd or?
My whole thought was, you know, I take it to my personal life, like I'm saving for my retirement. So, I put money aside, but I'm going to take it at some point.
Right.
With the city, it's, there isn't an end date.
Right, right.
So, I wanted to understand holistically that we have all this money sitting in investments. Well, can we use some of that money for some of these projects that we want to do? Or is that just off limits because we need to stay at a healthy? Because I don't want to get into all this debt, but I also personally am working at achieving a no-debt life. So, you know, that's kind of my whole thought is like, I don't want to be stuck with all these payments and then our housing market crashes again and our, the value, everything comes down and we still have all this debt. I don't want to be in that situation at the city level either.
Right, right. And this will show us that, basically. But you're right, in personal life, it's a little different.
Yeah.
We want to clean it all up because, you're right, we have an end date. But I always think back at Dallas, that Dallas show, right, the Hewings, right? And I don't know, y'all are too young, maybe, but they, you know, there's like, what, four generations in a house? And it kind of almost operates like that because they're all cycling through that house. So, it's a little bit different. That's what we're trying to keep up here because it's going to go on and on, right? And it's just not like we're going to be done, right?
Right.
At an end point.
And that's not what I was trying to think, but I'm just trying to understand, like, what's healthy? I mean, I have a feeling we're probably in a very good position of where we're at financially with the city. I don't want to make it worse by taking that cash and using it when we shouldn't have, but I want to have a clear understanding of.
Why you wouldn't or why you would.
Yes.
Yep, yep, or could we? Yep. I think that's going to shake the tree.
Right.
Yep, yep, great question, yep.
And I'm not an expert in the field.
Yeah, well, we've done a lot of this stuff and there's no really right or wrong answer, but it, now that Moody's and Standard and Poor's are more transparent in how they look at a city's finances, it's a lot easier for us to get into that, to make our planning kind of dovetail into what they're looking at. It was pretty mysterious back in the day. You really didn't know where they come up with all these, all of their sort of rules or methodology and things like that. So, we're able to really craft a better plan because of that. And it's all about transparency. So, really happy they are, too, right? Because we really know what, need to know what they're thinking as well, too. And again, a reserve is different. One city's reserve is going to be a lot different from another city's reserve. It's not like people, right? So, like your neighbor, right? They have a bunch of new cars and this and that, and you're like going, how does that happen? Well, there's a whole lot of dynamics going on between your two families, right? We all can't have the same thing. And that's same's true with a city, even if you're really close to the same size and everything like that. I mean, I work in Waconia and we're looking at Victoria. I mean, you know, Victoria gets an upgrade in their bond rating. Waconia stays the same. I mean, there, there's different socioeconomics, there's per capita income going on, you know, all sorts of different dynamics in those two cities. They may look the same and, you know, some have a lot more going on, right? And how old they are, are they newer, you know? And so, yeah, it's nice, yep. Look down the street and go, why not us? But, you know, they're two totally different communities and wish it was that easy, but it's not, so, different needs. Any other questions? Was there Eric? Anything for Todd? Perfect, well, thank you. I appreciate you coming in and we'll take this to probably one of our next work sessions also discuss this and see where we want to go with that. Okay. Yeah, I certainly appreciate you coming in and. Thanks for having me. And meeting with us. Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Give a little background on where our investments are at quickly.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. My name is Ryan Miles with Ellers Investment Partners on the investment side of things and wanted to do a few different things tonight. Introduce myself and the role I play on your team as for your investment strategy and then talk briefly just a little bit about current returns and what you have invested with Ellers Investment Partners right now. So, I've been with Ellers Investment Partners since this summer, most recently replacing a key member of our staff, Jack Fay, that you might have met or worked with in the past. I have been in the financial services industry for about 11 years, working with various cities and municipalities in commercial banking and doing investment strategy with them as well. So, getting up to speed with your investment strategy here, but not a newcomer to investments by any means as well. Registered investment advisor with Ellers and met with Maggie about five, four or five weeks ago. Does this kind of get an overview generally of what is invested with Ellers and discuss kind of those general funds as you were talking about earlier? So, to Todd's point, we're looking at the debt and also the investment side as well. So, I think both are key to developing a good strategy going forward and both are necessary. So, currently, right now, I invested with Ellers is a basket of securities, primarily brokered CDs. When they were, when the CDs were purchased, the bank-brokered CDs were the safest, highest-yielding investment at the time in a basket of laddered portfolio, meaning that the CDs will mature over a period of time. And so, that will give you liquidity throughout the whole duration of the investment portfolio that you have with us. So, that liquidity really kind of rolls about every three months, you have a different security maturing, $250,000 to about $400,000 in funds available at any one time, continually renewing and maturing, and then we can kind of look at reinvesting and following the current yield curve. So, everybody's been kind of seeing that the rates have been rising recently and that's a good thing on the investment side. So, finally, there's some interest and some investment to actually recoup a lot of the yield. The last few years, a lot of cities were, you know, you could have stuck the money underneath your mattress or you could have put it wherever and it didn't really matter. But now, we're starting to see some returns that are actually making a difference and part of this overall conversation of debt and investment. So, I was looking, doing some research and the last nine months, kind of year-to-date so far, the city of mayor has had an interest income of $26,272.09 with your current investment portfolio with us of 2.4 million, $2,465,972 is the overall investment portfolio that you have with us. And Maggie and I discussed kind of the overall investment strategy that the mayor has, and I understand there's several different places, buckets of money where funds are invested and Ellers is a piece of that, along with the Fielder Banks and, you know, some other forum funds as well. So, I think one of the things, I think, that we're going to work on and bring to the council, too, is an overall, you know, cohesive investment strategy to, Councilmember McNeely's point of just having a strategy that fits with all these different components, right? So, you have some money in some local banks with Ellers Investment Partners and with the Forum Fund and just making sure that all those make sense and they're all kind of an overall strategy to fit the investments as well as the overall debt that we're talking about here, too, with the Fire Hall. So, I think that's the plan going forward. And I wanted to just kind of give the high-level overview, so take any questions if anybody has any at this time, too.
And some of that stuff will be included with what Todd, what you're kind of.
Correct, yep.
Kind of a whole package.
Exactly, the whole package, yep. So, just wanted to give you kind of the 30,000-foot view tonight, so.
No, good.
Yeah.
But I think it's a great tool also.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just going to say, so you just made a comment, I just want to make sure I understand it.
Yes.
So, we have our CDs staggered throughout so that at any time we do have, we can take some of that cash from CDs in case of an emergency, because they're maturing, we have them staggered.
Correct.
Is that what your comment was?
Correct. Yep, correct. Very, great question. And our CDs are considered brokered CDs, so they trade, which is slightly different than the local bank CDs. So, you can actually trade those CDs at any time as well and sell them back into the market. So, that's one of the benefits of working with an investment advisor, that we can, there is a market for CDs. And so, we've been able to go out and buy some CDs from different banks around the country to give the city that full liquidity. But to your point, there's actually a maturity coming due here at the end of November is the next cycle that we have kind of coming due. But to your point, about every couple months, there's continually, something is maturing and then they'll look at what's the best use of those funds at that time, too.
And you said year-to-date, we're looking at about $26,000 we've.
Yep, hard dollars. You actually made an interest as in investing with Ellers, so, yep.
Anything else? Great. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yep.
Thank you.
All right, Maggie, that'll take the 7B2 Jaguar communication.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. All right, on the agenda tonight, Mayor and council is the Jaguar Communications franchise, the consideration for a franchise ordinance. So, just a little bit of background, we have been following a timeline, starting in August, running into tonight. The process is, what the ultimate goal or ultimate ask is to consider the proposed Jaguar franchise ordinance. So, just again, a little bit of background, Minnesota Cable Act contains the process for granting additional cable franchises. We currently have one with Nuvera, so this would be a second franchise agreement. The city has complied with the requirements of the franchising, so we did go through that timeline. We did publish the notice of intent, the written notice to Jaguar regarding the same and the application period we had of at least 20 days. And we did hold a public hearing regarding franchise applications. We only received one application, that was from Jaguar Communications in September. The application did comply with all the requirements of the Minnesota Cable Act and based on review of Jaguar's application, it appears that they meet the financial, technical, and legal qualifications to provide cable service. And this determination has been made by other Minnesota cities that they are present in as well. So, the public hearing regarding their application was held on September 24th. And at that meeting, they did have their attorney, Christine Anderson, summarize the application. There were a couple public comments that were made at that meeting. One was regarding the pricing of the internet service. They did kind of, they did have a response to that stating that they had previously considered offering a lower level of internet service, but ultimately determined that the market did not support that service. The second comment from the public was regarding their finances. The attorney did say that Jaguar was a privately-held corporation and therefore their statements are not public. The proposed franchise ordinance, following the public hearing, the city council directed staff to review the application and negotiate a proposed franchise ordinance for consideration at a later meeting. City staff did negotiate the attached franchise ordinance, which is very similar to the one with Nuvera, that is a requirement. So, Minnesota Cable Act sets forth requirements for cable franchises, which means that we have to have the same type of ordinance with level playing field. That means that the existing, an additional cable franchise has to be on the same terms and conditions and can't be more favorable or less burdensome than the existing one. The attached proposed franchise ordinance contains terms required by the Minnesota Cable Act. Additionally, the attached ordinance is substantially similar to the Nuvera franchise and therefore meets the requirements of the Minnesota Cable Act. One difference between the two franchise agreements between Jaguar and Nuvera is it pertains to the construction bond as opposed to a performance bond. Nuvera franchise requires $10,000 performance bond throughout the duration of the franchise, whereas, but in that, the city also permits, or the franchise also permits the city to reduce the bond on a year-by-year basis. In contrast, Jaguar proposes a $50,000 construction bond in the periods of substantial construction and no performance bond. This construction bond will remain in effect for either a year or until substantial completion of construction is completed, whichever is later. Jaguar's proposed construction bond is legally acceptable because it doesn't change the level playing field criteria, meaning there's no legal issue raised during the differences between Nuvera and the proposed Jaguar franchises. And it also complies with the Minnesota Cable Act. So, so that's the only difference that's at this time. They did say that if the city did feel that that was not appropriate, that they would still go ahead with internet, but they would not, they would not supply the cable. So, potential action tonight is that the city can adopt the proposed ordinance as drafted or reject it as drafted or direct staff to continue negotiations with Jaguar. In conclusion, based on the record developed by the city, the proposed Jaguar franchise ordinance meets requirements of the Minnesota Cable Act. And like I said, the only term that's, is substantially different from the existing Nuvera franchise is the construction bond as opposed to the performance bond. And Jaguar has indicated they are not willing to negotiate that issue. They have done that with other cities and it has been approved by other cities.
Have done what?
They have done the $50,000 construction bond instead of the performance bond. So, they're not willing to negotiate that and, which is just a little different than our previous franchise agreement, so.
That's my, let me hang up on this for a second.
Yeah, I mean, they're. Yeah, I mean, they're, they are keeping that until they have, they have like significant construction done. But they also do have, I mean, they are going to have their insurance as well and.
I just worry about, you know, if we get another section where they, you know, abandonment of service or removal after abandonment and they don't do it, I mean, do we need it? If there's a reason to have that $10,000 sitting there or in, how we have nothing once they install and they're financially out of it, I mean, outside of their investment, I get that, but.
Right.
We have nothing and now maybe we don't need anything, you know?
That's a good point.
I can't see them abandoning. The amount of money they're going to put in just for infrastructure to just abandon.
Well, companies are on business.
Well, true.
I hear what you're saying, I mean, we had, you know, we had one company, you know, the water tower.
Right.
But it's long today.
Yep, exactly.
And it's a fif, I believe it's a 15-year period, so they would have to re, you know, in the 15 years come back and, and this will be reduced.
And they want to give $10,000 and know we can reduce it every year and it just seems, it doesn't seem that big. I, we're not asked for $100,000, but that was my only concern, but I, I mean, you make a good point. They are so connected with the Carver County.
And this is where it's going, I mean, this is where technology is going and there's not a ton of communities that have cyber options and.
Out here.
Out here or even anywhere, there's not a ton of options. Yeah, but not, everybody has that option.
Not out here.
Correct.
In the cities you do.
Not necessarily, like my dad lives in Channing House and he doesn't have options for cyber. I don't have that.
So, that's my only concern is that, but.
I'm, I'm fine with the rest.
As they're installing, I don't know why we'd even need the $50,000.
Right.
I mean, there's no reason to even have that, though. I don't know what that even gains us.
It's just kind of.
We know they're installing it, they're here doing it, making their investment.
It's just, um, it's just a way that, I mean, it's just kind of the way to monitor and make sure they're doing what they're doing. And it gets released after they're done with their construction. It's just kind of a, a bond that we hold until they're done, just to make sure they do it correctly.
It's not like there are immediate concerns without it, so the front end is just not on the back end.
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution from 1835.
Wait, oh.
Um, first, first I have you adopt ordinance 224 and then the next resolution would approve this company.
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 224.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Now, we'll look for a motion to approve resolution 10-8-18-35, ordinance 224 summary.
And that just is the summary for the newspaper?
For the paper.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, take us to 7B3 please, 2018 employee benefits.
Okay, so, this kind of came up at a workshop just to, while we're navigating the 2019 benefits, we've been kind of having an ongoing discussion, just to kind of help with 2000, the remainder of 2018. So, I just want to give a little, I know we've been talking about this a lot. So, the city budgeted about $38,400 for contributions in 2018, of which only $30,000 has been utilized based on kind of employee needs. I mean, it's, this year that, like, around the middle of the year, it has changed those needs and, and so as a result, there ha, is some funds that are going unused. And so, based on, I know you guys all know kind of the, what we're trying to do with the 2019, but to kind of help ease some of the, the health insurance premiums for the remainder of 2018 without going over budget, there is a, there would be an increase, or staff is proposing, or I'm proposing, an increase from 800 to 1,500, or up to 1,500 per employee, per month to the end of 2018 for family, just to help cover that. And it wouldn't exceed what's already budgeted, but it would just kind of help employees at this time kind of with that until we figure out what, what we're doing in 2019.
So, it's budgeted for, we don't, we haven't met the budget.
We haven't.
So, now we're trying to help all the employees that might need that extra money.
Right. So, there is a.
So, we're not going above and beyond our budget?
Right, right. So, there's about, um, yeah, $8,400 that hasn't been used, that will not get used.
And not everybody's going to use that 1,500 as well?
Right, right.
And it'll keep us under a budget amount, we won't go over.
Exactly.
Any clarification needed and? Someone would like to make a motion, I would entertain. How, how are you saying? Does everybody eligible to use it?
Everybody's eligible to use it, but based on what I've, like, what I've put together, we won't go over. So, um, so based on, based on going to up to 1,500 per employee, um, how do I explain this? So, right now, we have 800, but just for the next three months, if we go up to 1,500, up to 1,500 for each employee to cover a premium cost, we will use that eight, that extra 8,400, but we will not go over it.
What's going to be used?
It'll go towards premiums.
So, like if I have, my premiums were $1,000.
And mine were $1,200.
And $1,200. I would get an extra 200 because I wouldn't have to pay and then she'd get the.
So, are we compensating those employees or using this in any way because you're essentially upping someone's wage?
Well, and I did, I did talk to the attorney about this and he, he felt like that this was not, like, was not gifting or anything like that. It was, it was, the way that we're doing it is we're just upping the contribution, we're not, and that's why it says up to 1,500 per employee. We're not compensate, I mean, it's, like, some, some employees won't benefit, some employees will. So, I mean, it's not, I mean, just like when we were looking at 2019, everybody's needs are different and I, I guess I look at it as like an.
So, good point. What about?
Because for the longest time, we, we were dealing with what pay equity amongst people in the offices, what they're just paying. It was kind of a little more before I got here, but I mean, to this effect of pay equity and as to, you know, how we're paying people, I just don't, I, I guess, I worked for government a lot times and never once has anybody ever said, well, we're just going to start paying Deputy B. extra money to, for his health insurance while Deputy A. remains, make you say no.
It's, well, we're not.
If this was like, if we were a union, if we were a union shop, we'd be all, we'd be all over the union and say about that.
Right.
But that's, I mean.
I mean, it's like, it's, it's open for everybody equally, it's just, just like the 800 is. It's just not everybody uses it the same way.
It's strange, I mean, you know, I, I get it and.
But think about your coworkers. Not every one of your coworkers is going to take the health insurance from their organization because they might be on a scholarship or something else. So, just because it's available to you and you don't use it, I mean, so your compensation package might be different from somebody else's.
But I work for a private, I work for a private company and I'm not taking money from taxpayers. That's, that's the difference. Where this money, if it's sat here, eventually it will get rolled over into something later. So, it's not like free money sitting in a pot here, that's still tax money that was collected from the people that live here.
But I, I guess I look at it as it was.
So, if we can explain that to the taxpayers as to this is why it's happening and this is why it's okay, then I think that makes sense, you know, I mean, it's ultimately, it's everybody's money on this year.
But, but even if we switch the plan for next year, it's going to be the same scenario. We've just chosen to pay, so let's say we choose to pay 100% of the employees' benefits. You're also aged, so if you're a younger employee, it's, it's less expensive for us to have it. So, it's the same.
But it's also a mid-year change here.
But we, but we budgeted $38,000, so we're not changing the budget, it's just, we just didn't have to use it all because we had to say 800 per every employee, but not everybody used it, so it's just moved over.
And I feel, I mean, I.
I mean, I get it, but.
I see both sides of it, and I don't have a problem with, from a pay equity standpoint, I think it's fair and open to everyone and everyone's insurance is different and that's just how it is. I, I'm comfortable with that. I, for me, I'm looking at it as we budgeted $38,000, we've managed it really good for the first nine months and we see there's a little bit extra, let's distribute that back out now and, and use it and use our $38,000. I'm kind of looking at it that way, me personally, but I don't think it's a bad way to go and we budgeted for it, we've accepted that, we knew we would be paying that amount and now we're just kind of, and towards the end of the year, we can redistribute some of that and, and utilize it. That's, that's for me how I'm looking at it, Eric, and how I will, you know, if asked about it, so.
And that's how I look at it too, because we're not going it from another line item in a budget, we're still using it from our.
I just don't believe government has extra money. That money came from the people that live here, the people that pay taxes. I just, there is no such thing as extra money. Right, yeah, that could be money that we can say, well, let's give everybody in town a dollar back or whatever the amount is, you know, I mean, let's change in health insurance all of a sudden this year that somebody's having a heart.
Well, you have nu, it, it's a lot of things, like you, like I've said in the past, like you've had a huge change in your staffing. You have younger people, you have younger people with families. Historically, you have had the opposite, so.
They didn't know that, that that was insurance possibly came over.
Well, that's not, I mean, if, if you also look at your history, you've also lost people because of your benefits and so that's why we've been trying to push for this change for 2019 and that's why I'm trying to push to retain the employees that we currently have.
So, so something changed in the health plan or it changed mid-year and.
No, nothing changed in the health plan, it's just, there's just been a significant change in, one, hiring a new employee and two, somebody who's had a family situation change, so.
And we've lost an employee through the insurance package.
Well, yeah, absolutely, there's definitely a problem and going forward, I don't see an issue with, you know, correcting those, but I just, it just doesn't, it, it seems really odd and it just doesn't feel tolerable. If we were to walk around and talk to people and say, hey, you know, has your company ever just upped the amount of money that we're willing to pay for your insurance? You know, for the last three months or years, has people given extra, extra money there? I guarantee you that nobody ever has.
Well, when we budget, we can't, we can't say, okay, can you tell us who's using it? So, this person, I'm only going to pay 600, this person, I'm only going to pay 400, this one, I'm going to pay the full 800 and budget that way. We had to budget 800 times four employees. So, yeah, we're coming in, we're not taking money from a different account, we're taking money that was designated for health benefits, so why not disperse it back out to make sure that we use it? I mean, this happens to our budgets all the time, we don't use it, it goes into some fund, gets lost and it just sits as cash somewhere, so I.
I think that that money goes for, more towards the public good, right? I hate to say not towards the employee good, but it's insurance, it's insurance that was set when people came here and they knew what they were paying, you know, I, I just, I don't think, we don't have extra money. I mean, it's, it's taxpayer money, no matter if it's where it comes from or where it goes. So, before, just so we can stick to procedure, I don't want to stop the conversation, I want to keep the conversation, but let's, because there may not even be a motion, so the convers, so let's see if we get a motion, a second, and then pick the conversation just to follow proper procedure, because I want, I want to keep the conversation going. So, if someone would like to make a motion or not, then maybe the conversation will be ended.
I'll make the motion to increase the resolution 10-8-18-36 to increase the benefits for employees to 1,500 the remainder of the year.
Perfect, thank you, we have a second, we have more to second, okay. Now, let's continue the conversation if there's, you know, other conversations. I, I see both sides, I, I really do, I, you know. There isn't extra money, I, I mean, I, I see where you're coming from on that. I do feel for me, I think in the last year and the conversation, or the last two years from the conversations we've had, I feel we're at the point, again, without the proper study possibly, I feel we are short on our family insurance and getting us up for these couple of months while we decide what we're going to do going into 2019. I'm comfortable with it. Now, if it was coming, we're going to exceed what we budgeted for, I'd be, I, I don't know if I could support that. I would support it to what we budgeted for. That's. Exceeding our budget or not, I mean, just from where we've set what we will spend on versus going over that. Since we have this extra money, that's it, that's okay. Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know.
It's not extra money, it's budgeted.
I mean. It, it is budgeted money, but it's.
That we've already.
Absolutely, you're just arbitrarily deciding to up benefits levels just for a couple of months. Do you not think?
But we have been discussing this for, since I've been on here and every employee that we have start, we have said, we're talking about it, we're negotiating it, we haven't come to, we haven't decided anything and we just keep saying that month after month after month to all of our, not all, but to all our new employees. And quite honestly, I am, I, I, I don't want our city to be a baby mill. We get the new grads, we teach them for a year, whatever, and then we ship them off to a bigger city that gives them more benefits. I think we have great employees, I want to keep our employees. And if it's, if we need to increase to get to our budget through the end of the year to make our employees happy, because about our employees, if we don't have our employees, our infrastructure dies. Our infrastructure dies, we don't have a count, people move out, we don't have a tax base anyway. So, I don't have an, an issue paying this extra money for three months to keep them happy. So, we're not a baby mill anymore.
I agree, we, we're trying to address the amount of issues within the future, if you're.
We've been talking about that for two years and I'm tired of talking, I'm like, let's just get down to action now.
For me, I don't even know if I look at it as, just from the, and maybe it was just the term use of keeping them happy, I'm looking at remaining competitive on our family insurance, where I think.
I want to retain our employees.
I think they need to remain competitive, that's for the three months. And again, I, you know, I, I do see what you're saying on the extra, you know, I, I don't want to call it extra because it's been budgeted for, it's there.
Reflects the money.
I don't think, I think we do a pretty good job of not getting in the habit of getting into October, November, looking at our budget saying, hey, we got another $8,000 we have spent, let's start, you know, on every line item. I, I think we do a good job of maintaining that. I think this is an out of the ordinary. I would agree. We have the ordinary. Out of the norm that we typically do, I don't think we come November, look at our budget lines and find out what we haven't spent and let's hurry up and spend it so we can get that next year, you know? I think we do a good job of managing that. It just seems like, I mean, if, if we were, if you were to say we're going to, we got this extra bond that we're going to disperse amongst all the employees, I mean, that seems, seems fairer. But now, right now, we're uploading this money to one employee, to one place, half the city. I mean, it just, it just seems like we're, you know, sending money just to, to one person to keep, or to people to keep them here. But the others. And that's not, it's not fair to the rest of them. But the others can't use it. They, their premiums aren't that high, so they don't, I mean, we could look, we could go into seminars, people go to seminar, people do other things that we spend money on, but tuition reimbursement, some people use it, some don't. That's, that's true too, I, I agree. But when it's something that's set out, it's, this is, this is what it is for, for a year. This is, this is what you're coming into, the city at this time, this is what we'll pay for benefits. That's what everybody pays, that's what everybody pays. You know, and then I think the proper time is to address it within that cycle. I don't think, I don't think the appropriate action is to.
I don't think, I don't think the appropriate action is to just have these, to take on city, city bond to help somebody else with their
Good points. Any other discussion? Anything else? Okay, then we'll vote, I'll, I'll, we have a motion, a second to approve, uh, twenty eighteen Employee Benefits Resolution ten dash eight dash eighteen dash thirty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries three, one. Thank you. Uh, seven, C one, please, Maggie, fire department contracts.
Okay, so, um, I just wanted to get the, um, every year, we do contracts with Camden, Hollywood, Waconia, Watertown Township, and, um, so I just wanted to get that template in front of you, um, that includes kind of the breakdown of their fees, uh, for two thousand nineteen. Um, the townships, we, we base this on the number of households, I did get that information from the township. So, the townships, it looks like we'll pay twenty-six point four one percent of the operating budget for the fire department, and we'll pay roughly thirty-four percent of the truck payment, that's what they've been paying in the past. Um, and so, I, uh, they, this is just a standard contract between all the townships, it's essentially the same, just have to fill in each of the, the lines for each township, but, um, this just authorizes, um, for the mayor's signature on the contracts, and, and to get staff, uh, staff allowing us to get that out to the townships so they can finalize their budget, so
So, other than the number of parcels, nothing's changed, and if there's the same contract we've used, still allow?
Um, this is the same contract we've used in the past years.
Six, seven years, I believe, no?
Yep, so, what has changed, um, Watertown did have a couple more houses, and then we obviously had an increase in our housing, um, so those percentages did change a little bit. Um, the, the operating budget for the fire department, um, did go up a little bit, um, so with their costs, um, I probably should've included their last years, but the cost went up just slightly for each township, and for the city of mayor as well, um, but the truck payment did stay the same, um, but, yeah, there, it just, um, based on the housing numbers, uh, the, uh, Camden, Hollywood, and Waconia stayed pretty much the same, so
All right, any further questions or clarification? Now, I'll vote for motion to approve the fire service contract for two thousand nineteen.
I'll make my motion.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Motion, second, and further discussion. Now, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. City council report.
Sheriff, you can report.
Oh.
Thank you.
Nope.
Um, just real quick, um, council member Butterfield, McHale, and myself were at, last Sunday, a week ago Sunday, at the Minnesota Fall Fire Fighters Memorial, uh, Ceremony, uh, for Captain Wilmer, it was a great ceremony, very professional, they do a great job out there, Daniel and Nikki, uh, went to the national, um, Captain Wilmer was also inducted to the National Fall Fire Fighters, um, Memorial, and again, I don't know if you wanna comment on it or not, she, uh, did attend.
Yeah, um, I attended personally, not representing the city, but, um, it was really well done. There was a hundred and two families, um, that were inducted, um, in two thousand seventeen. I might be off on the numbers, but eighty of them actually passed away in two thousand seventeen, and there was twenty-two that were inducted from previous years, um, just for various reasons, if they were considered, 'cause a lot of the laws didn't change, so, um, it was very moving, um, Emily and the girls went, and a lot of Jeff's family and her family attended, um, and a couple firefighters, Rod and Lois, Anna, and Nate and I, um, yep, Dennis was a, actually, a escort, a family escort, so they had four family escorts, um, and they pretty much did everything you need A lot of water, water, um, because he was crying, so Took him out, walked him around, so the family could focus in on the service. Lots of different activities at the hotel for the kids and for, um, the surviving family members. You can watch it online, it's about an hour and a half service, um, I think it's firehero.org, if you watch the mayor fire, um, Facebook page. I think we posted on there, or we will be posting the link, um, to watch the service, and Emily received the flag and rose, and it was very moving, I'm really glad I was able to go.
Thank you, I'm glad you could go. All right, any other, any other items? Motion for motion to adjourn?
I'll make my motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned. All right, anyone need a break? Then we'll move right into the work session for the county, uh, benefits.
Okay, so, I, I guess, I'm hoping everybody had a chance to look at the packet beforehand, and I, I'm kinda just wanting to be a conversation, I know we've had this conversation a lot, and so, kind of, what are your questions? Um, I tried to kind of bring in a lot of information that you guys asked for in the past, um, kind of, what our premiums have been, how they've changed over the years, what our plans were, um, I also included in the packet the four different plans, um, that are, that we're looking at going towards. One is if we don't do any change to our plan, it would be, um, the, hold on, one second, it would be the fifteen, twenty-five hundred deductible, sixty percent co-insurance, fifty dollar copay. And then, um, so that would be kind of, we did nothing, but we're, I know we've talked about for a long time switching to an HSA, so there are three HSA plans, um, in front of you as well, um, I don't really know what S P I C stands for, um, it's ju- I think it's just kind of a plan type thing. But I just, I, I'm wondering, I guess, if anything stuck out to you that I can answer any questions for, um, uh, for, for the discussion tonight?
So Two pages that I remember on the packet, but, um, she's got that one page that has life insurance, and long-term and short-term disability insurance.
Yep.
So, it shows here we have not offered long or short-term.
Right.
It's just for four, dot, forty dollars a month, the cost of long-term, short-term, and telephone. So, that would be like ten dollars a month for forty, so it'd be forty dollars a month for one?
I'm sorry, it's forty dollars per month.
Per person?
Oh, I'm sorry, that is a misleading figure, yeah, so it's per person, and then
Twenty dollars per month per person.
Per person. Um, the, the one thousand nine hundred twenty is act, is accurate, for the entire
Were, um, for my
Sorry, I, I can't believe it is illegal, I apologize.
Oh, okay. Forty dollars per month per person.
All right.
And would they, would employees have the ability to purchase more, short-term, long-term disabilities?
Uh, I don't believe for disability, but for life insurance, we do a lot
Because I know for, for me, whether it's private or public sector, there's like, this base amount that your store will give you for short-term, long-term, that you can always buy, like, sixty-five percent coverage or eighty percent coverage, so
I would have
And that would be an option that we could take.
Right. Yeah, I, I
That right, I think, it's a different strategy.
Yeah, I can look into that, um, I know for life insurance, we've always, we've always done the fifteen thousand, and then we, you can purchase anything above that.
I'll try to grab my phone. Okay, so, I didn't review this like in great detail, as I was traveling.
It's a, it's a lot.
It was just on my phone, so
Yeah. So, I, yeah, I can
So, the different possibilities?
So, I have kind of the, so, on this one page, sorry, I
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, where it has hel- current health premium budget at the top, so I, what I did is I took what it would cost the city for that plan, and then I showed the difference between the three plans at the bottom, compared to the plan we've been proposing for the last few months, um, so the one
So, this, okay, the top one was the plan you guys have been talking about for a while?
Uh, the twenty-eight hundred deductible with the one hundred coverage, and then the
So, that's one that's in the little dotted box on the left, is what
Yep.
I'm talking about, okay.
Yep, so, we kinda, what I did is I showed you what it would be if we didn't do anything, we didn't do an HSA, we just stuck with the current plan, um, style, and then I did, um, another HSA plan, or we did another HSA plan, um, that's a two thousand dollar deductible, eighty percent, um, if you look at that plan, those, um, so that wa- yeah, okay, so that's a two thousand dollar deductible, eighty percent co-insurance, and then HSA, and then, um, the other one is a two thousand one hundred HSA. So, that one's more expensive, and then the other ones are less expensive, if you look at that. And then I did another one that shows without HSA contribution for the year, what that would do.
And then I'm looking at your pie chart, so
Yep.
Of our two point five two six million dollar budget, it's two hundred and eighty-three dollars in that to go in court salaries and benefits, can I read that quickly?
Uh, yep, so eleven percent, so, yep, of the two million five hundred twenty-six, that's enterprise and general, two hundred sixty-eight, that's salary and benefits.
Okay, so eleven percent of our annual operating budget goes to salaries and benefits.
Right.
Currently, or what it would be?
Oh, that's, that's what it would be.
Okay, that's what it would be, okay.
Yep.
And what are we currently?
Oh, gosh.
Currently, what are we spending on salaries and
I would say it's, it's, it's not too different, but I don't have that number, shoot. I don't have it.
So, what's our budget for this year? Do we have a copy of our, if we got nineteen budget?
I don't have that in front of me. I can grab it, oh, yeah, so
With our approved, uh, budget?
I could calculate it probably really quickly. If you guys wanna keep
Well, maybe we're not gonna increase those twenty thousand dollars, which should be minus twenty grand. Yeah, but our operating budget this year's a little
It's a little bit different than it is now.
So, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it probably is fairly close.
I would imagine.
Yeah. Some of this thinking, it's a lot of information, we talked about
Yeah, I apologize, I'm here.
So, a lot of information, that's a lot of eighty, ninety, a hundred percent.
Yep.
A lot of this is driven up a hundred percent for employee, and then eighty, ninety, a hundred for
Same thing.
For family, yep, so that's, a lot, a lot of them are looking at that's where they're coming from. Some of these higher ones, she's even included HSA contributions, I think, um
Oh, 'cause they were gonna contribute
Three thousand family, fifteen hundred individual, so adding, so, as you go into total impact, you know, forty-four percent, that's with, with the increase
Off putting in
Plus putting into their HSAs, yep. So, some of that, it's a, it's a lot of information. And then, further down, I mean, then there's, we talked about the HSA, so, you know, this is what we're gonna pay, if we went to a So, an eighty percent coverage
All the different qualities for health.
Well, can we make sure we don't have it? It's probably not
Well, there's somebody at first, we won't
Is that where you're not claiming it's four times zero?
Yeah.
Tiled and explained.
Yeah, I don't So, yeah, I don't remember what it was, what their age, what their, you know, what was. I don't know, it's almost four thousand for individual, is that too much? For the HSA, what was the, fifty-eight hundred, and then
We do add, have HSA or no?
No, no, moving to it.
Okay. I don't have the HSA.
Oh, twenty-eight fifty-six, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, that's almost half now.
Unfortunately, healthcare is
And they have the opportunity to, publish, put in their own HSA also.
The information I just met, and I went through the league of Minnesota cities, plus on a state survey, and all the other cities and counties in the area, fill it out, and we have access to it, we get a password, and all that stuff. And so, what I went through, and I got your overall operating budget for cities of Carver County, and two surrounding cities, and also the county, and I divided it by this, the number of full-time employees, any part-time employees, or any being in consideration, and so, it's not full-time employees, and I divided it by their, you know, their overall operating budget, and kinda came up, you know, so, city mayor, we're at two million dollar operating budget, you know, so that's five hundred, just over five hundred thousand for full-time employees, and then the county, you know, the counties, you know, they got two operating budgets, and it's right around there, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars operating budget for employees. Granted, I know there's other variables and everything in there, but it's a kind of a broad scheme of, kind of, of mayor
Mayor the top, mayor the top one?
It's pretty close.
No, is it the top one?
Yeah, well, you, you got a bad copy
Oh, yeah, my, for sure.
Yeah.
Oh, I can see.
I think it ran out of
Mayor, I'm trying to figure it out.
I was thinking it worked, I was thinking double.
Yeah.
Yeah, well
So, I just, I just kinda, just kind of a I mean, I just wanted to show that, you know, on the cities, they give, you know, about higher operating budget, and all the tax base is different, some cities more personal, some cities more residential, and that sort of thing. It's kinda, we're all, we gotta do the same work, so there's kinda, there's running pretty much, everything here, and all, that shows, so
What did you guys talk, I apologize, I wasn't here at the last, it's just a work for my family. Did you guys talk about what you guys liked about HSA, or like, what kind of plans that you guys were interested in doing?
The one we talked, then it was, we kinda gave her other, we each had kinda different information we wanted her to gather, and that's what she's now come with.
Okay.
Um, you know, I, from what I was, I wanna see some different, different scenarios, if it's a hundred percent employee, and eighty percent family, I wanna see maybe an eighty-eighty, and see what those numbers were, and, and kinda how, some of that, I think Eric had some, some tight that, one, see the pie charts, uh, Liz, I don't remember, um, what Liz, but, but, things like, so we're just now coming back on a little more information.
Yeah, I wanted to see what the actual benefits would be in the insurance company, and
Yeah, and were there other options? Um, it's, for me, as far as, I'm, 'cause I'm very comfortable with an HSA, uh, you know, moving into that.
I'm, I mean, I'm on the fence, I'm, I like the hundred percent for the employee, I think that's key for the employee. I, I like eighty percent for family, I know that puts a little bit more of a burden, so that's just kinda where I'm feeling right now. Not because of the
We compare to other cities, kind of in Carver County, what they did, and, and, almost everyone's at HSA, and now some of them went a hundred percent, and then, there wasn't anyone who did a hundred, hundred. It was, if it was a hundred, then it was between fifty and eighty for family, and if it dropped down to eighty, then it was more around eighty for fam- you know, so it was balanced out, so
Right.
Me personally, I'm fine with a hundred percent and eighty for family. My biggest hangup will be on the total cost impact, of course, and the forty-four point eight percent increase. I just think that's a big increase, I'm I just think that's a big increase, I'm always big on how much of a percentage things are increasing. That's a huge increase, I have a problem with that.
Um-
Uh, but if it knocked down to, further downward of the total cost without the HSA contributions for the first year, and we could maybe step it, I'd feel more comfortable with that. So without that contribution, it's only twenty-two point forty-three, point four-three percent increase. I think that's a great, good, safe, uh, part for the city to do, you know, for the first year, increase by twenty-two percent. And then maybe the second year, then we contribute to the HSA and, you know, kinda pick up the slack there and kind of see how things are balanced. That's where I'm coming from.
And I just said that this year, ten percent of our current budget is going for salaries and benefits. And then next year, with the change that you're proposing and all that, you'll reduce it to eleven percent.
That's, that's, I mean, the eleven percent right now is based on the highest, so I just want you to know that.
So, and if you look, I did some, I did some research of my own, not really in the industry, but some other research on, um, private sector and private sector. And I found that the average is about eighteen percent of your budget should be towards salaries and benefits. So, um, is that just in general? They call nationwide, I did some research in non- for non-union cities, non-union cities, private sector.
I agree with that, okay.
So, not private sector, so, private sector, it's at anywhere between fifteen and fifty-two percent depending on your revenue, it's kind of like, okay, not us, so. But, yeah, this is all private sector, non-union, but this was also nationwide, so we're looking at Louisiana and New York and all. And it looks like about eighteen percent is the average. So, I know we're falling towards that, and I know we're trying to be officially responsible with our money. But, I'm just thinking if the average is eighteen, it's gonna make me a little closer to average. I'm not asking us to be eighteen percent, we're even at twenty or ninety, fifty, I just, let's try, let's get us closer.
I think if eighteen percent, uh, would be a huge jump, only going back-
That would get a lot more employees too.
Going back to our rate study where we feel salaries are kind of in line on the insurance, I mean, to make up an eight percent on the insurance is, you know, phenomenal, I mean, that'd be a huge amount, so.
But you're also probably looking at, you know, for us to get to eighteen percent, we're probably, we definitely aren't looking at more employees at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
But with the four that we have, I think-
I think we are sure, I think we are gonna, the employee side of things, I think are gonna start shifting soon too, I mean, that's gonna get us there.
But, I mean, it's, I mean, and for me, I guess, in my mind, to jump from ten to eleven percent, you know, obviously our operating budget is much bigger, so, you know, we can afford that. Really, when you say jump from that ten to eleven percent, you know, we're still staying officially responsible, but-
I've gone back and forth, as you said, I don't, I don't like just a forty-four percent increase, but on the flip side of that, it's only twenty thousand dollars.
It's only one percent of our operating budget.
Yeah, so, twenty thousand annually, but it's a big increase, I get hung up on the forty-four percent increase in, in one year for insurance, I think that's a, that's a really big jump, but-
But it's, but it's twenty grand, and, and, we're, it's twenty grand, but if we do lose someone, we're gonna pay twenty grand to rehire someone, so I look at it that way too. I mean, what's it cost to rehire, retrain, you know, and I, I don't know those numbers, but there's algorithms for that.
On average, it's about five thousand dollars a month that private companies lose to-
There's money for that, so, you know, and, so, I'm perfectly fine with the hundred, a hundred percent employee, eighty percent family. I, I, I'm gonna struggle a little bit on how much we should donate to the HSA. I think the proposal, here at three thousand, family fifteen hundred individuals, a lot, um-
They have been, uh-
Really aligned with, you know, other cities. So do we never cap, I mean, once we hit, I think the intent is to make sure you have enough in there to pay for, you know, the years worth, so it's not costing anything, but at some point, after three years, if no one uses any now, they have three, forty, five hundred dollars sitting in there. Do we keep contributing in after, you know, if it's just extra money, you know? You leave it in there, it's incentive for them, you know, to not pull it off, if they don't have to, then people are not using all of their savings or whatever. Once they hit that max, then will they not contribute on their own?
It's a yearly phase, oh, I-
Not contribute on their own because they're getting shitty bucks, they don't need it, now there's no incentive to do anything on their own.
But, you know, you can also use that money when you retire to pay for your health insurance premiums.
True.
So-
Here is with you forever, you know?
Yeah, and there's no, there's no expiration date to it, so when they turn sixty-five and they wanna get, you know, a supplemental, they got money they need to say to do that. And that's kind of like their, their small little savings account for that benefit, so.
Seems high for me, I, I'm not saying I can't get a board with it, it just seems high, I think if we were proposing a forty-four percent increase on sal- some salary, in double some salary, it, I, I wouldn't support that. Uh, you know, so, like I said, I think even about a twenty-two percent is a really good, good faith progress in getting to where we need to be, I don't know if we have to do it all in one month, but, and again, just my thoughts, I'm saying, I-
I kind of love what I said last time, too, like, we, I know we don't have the numbers, it'd be nice to have those numbers, it's the plan we had, like, when I started, it would be the same plan, and if we would increase it over the last few years, 'cause we've gotten every increase.
I did some math on that, I factored in, uh, I factored in from twenty-ten, I took the five hundred dollars and factored in, uh, six and a half percent increase every year. And this year would be eight hundred, forty-seven dollars. And we're at eight hundred, so we're not far, we're not far off from, you know, a six percent, six and a half percent increase. I was trying to find what the Minnesota, you know, kinda average was, or, you know, so that, that number may be off, but I did some of that math.
I also did a one where you had half the HSA contribution.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I don't know.
Contribution should, I mean, but I, again, I, maybe I'm, maybe I-
I don't have an HSA account, so I'm not very familiar with. You have, you know, you sort of, as any agency does, it's been around forever, so, what's, what's the name of it? That company just gives me a-
You can, I mean, it's like-
HSA, that money expires at the end of the year, HSA's won't last for forever, and doesn't ever expire, so when you put money towards that- Well, I understand HSA in general, I don't know the amount that, that companies or cities input into the account.
And if you feel more comfortable, and I don't, I haven't talked to the employees about it, but it's like, if you want them to match it at like some level, you can do a policy for that too.
A lot of places do that.
I don't like that much, you know, before, we let that, we don't check and make sure, they help you, but-
I hate that. That's gonna be, I hate that.
I don't know, I don't like it.
I gotta run my-
But I do it. So, I don't, I don't know what other spots are, I would say, sounds like-
I think we have to move in a direction-
Yeah, you know, it's better that it's down to, you know, how we want to, what can I, we have five different areas to manage, so.
I think it's a big, it's big to swallow, but I feel like we were not providing a good benefit, and we found that out with different candidates through the last couple of years and from employees leaving because of, you know, benefits are a huge thing and we, I've, I've owned two, uh, we own two small businesses, because the employees are your biggest asset. Not only to the taxpayers, but to the city, that we wanna keep them around, we don't want them to, you know, come in, get their experience and then go to a city that can actually afford to give them those benefits. So, I'm not for a hundred percent of, a hundred percent for employee, but not for family. Um, I'm happy, I would be happy with eighty percent, I'm flexible on the HSA, I, I don't wanna scrounge on it, I don't know if three thousand is too much or not enough, I don't, I'm not familiar enough with that.
And I agree, uh, with you, probably stuff like that, but, um, not totally, I mean, a hundred percent for employees, I don't know about that.
And we budgeted, right, we had, had some of these numbers in our budget, but, but we were able to, when we finalized the levy in December.
Right, so what I did is I shot high, so that then whatever decision we make, we can just reduce.
Okay.
So, so I budgeted for the highest, just because of that fact that once you set the levy, you can't go back up.
Right.
So I didn't know, you know, I was waiting for a decision, so.
Which I was fine, I'm okay with, we had to put something in, in, in September. And I, I would hope that the employees would be happy if the-
Sure, it's a big change, yeah, I think, for possibly, I do get, I have to, I have to, I have to, yeah.
I mean, would you feel comfortable if you had like a matching?
I wouldn't, I don't want employees to feel, I don't, I want them to like force that they have to put money in. Can they put money in, even if, yeah, like, they can just choose, yeah.
They can have a deductible and a paycheck to money, okay?
Right, so, do, do we have it where we, where you, oh, you did half, so you did sort of-
I did about half, yeah. I did, okay, so it's a forty, what is it, it's a twenty-eight-hundred for individuals, fifty-six hundred for families, deductible. So it's a little over, yeah.
Is the point of this discussion is to discuss this and bring something to council to vote on next round, so like, are we all in agreement that like, we like a hundred and eighty?
No, that's not, it'll have to be a grand, I mean, just to kinda get an idea of that, to what to bring to council, yeah.
Four, four in an actual meeting? And see, and I'm leaning more towards the ninety. And the only reason I say that is because, and I don't want you to get hung up on the numbers, you know, because paying someone's salary versus paying their, um, their insurance is a huge- I, quite honestly, I would have had better insurance coverage and leave my salary the same, um, because insurance, insurance, medical costs, the number one reason people go bankrupt in this country is for medical costs. And I, I, I feel that, you know, to be good towards others' money and I'm looking at, you know, our operating budget, four thousand dollars a year, bump it up to maybe ninety percent, you know, one hundred to ninety, it's four thousand dollars a year. It, that means a whole lot more to people than maybe a dollar per hour. Yeah, but, I mean-
Well, yeah, the spouse care and insurance, they've got, some of that, we want the mon- the money, and then they're, you also, I personally think insurance, people, people, to, people want better insurance. I, I think, but, I know I'm, I'm better for better insurance, I don't know, but, and I still get high, and, and again, it's hard to not to, not look at the number, I mean, the increase, still an increase, no matter what, I mean, still-
It's starting.
As I can see, it jumped now, stepping day, I don't think we've set a hundred percent that salaries are not, we haven't had that discussed about rates and salaries, so I need to jump into here, then realize we gotta raise salaries, and now we're looking at a ninety percent increase for the, I mean, that's just, because we're outside of that, I don't see a problem with it. A hundred and eighty and maybe a little lower on the HSA for the first year, which I would hope that again, the following, you know, this is a big impact to the, not big, but a percentage to the budget. But we can stop at two hundred in twenty twenty, doesn't mean we quit both for a hundred ninety, a hundred hundred, whatever, which we determined, but, I think for now, it's like, right, and anything we would do with any of these numbers here, even at the worst, you know, at a twenty-two point four-three percent increase, that's a, that's a nice, that's a nice jump, I think.
Whatever we talk about salaries-
I don't think we feel wrong, I don't think we feel wrong, or-
That's gotta be coming us through the brain.
Yeah, but eventually we have to decide what we're gonna do with that, study that we did, and, and actually present that we have officially, you know, we agree that salaries are, are competitive, I mean, uh, we don't have those work session discussions between us, but, it may give us a counter for something after the budget.
Yeah. Do you want to discuss job changes, like you're-
Um, so I just got this week, actually, the city, or today, the city clerk information back, and so now we can pull it all together and have the full study completed, um, so that discussion, yeah, will probably come back in October, early November.
As a work session, are we allowed to ask the employees?
I think they would ask them, they wanna give them the information, certainly, I, they'd certainly want to help the meeting, and if they want a discussion, they can, they don't have to.
You don't have to.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Well, I'm trying to see how I support that. So, I don't think, 'cause like I know we're looking at past, past, we're looking at past, but we really need to, like, the city mayor is, is growing, and it's growing quick right now, as the change of years, every day, for all summer long. And, just, you know, kinda the transition, you know, when I take over the waste water plant, and kinda looking on terms, like, I could retire here, I would love to retire here, I love what I do. But I wanna have good employees, you know, behind me, you know, helping me out all the time, like, this year, it's like, I'm gonna go through that transition if I'm finding a new guy, it's like, that really is, it kinda, you know, it kinda stopped everything from course, it's like, now I'm just working overtime, it's just a city of love, so it's like, I mean, and I, I'm, I'm having a family, so it's like, my eyes really opened up a lot through, through weeks, 'cause I'm like, okay, it's not just me anymore. So it's like, when I started the city mayor-
It's not just me deprivation.
Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, and it's, it's, so it's not just me anymore, so, um, when I started, it's like, well, we're, we're gonna up our, okay, I don't know if it's operating, okay, I don't know if it's operating, no. I'm not the only one using it, so, I mean, it's, you know, family coverage is very important, it's a safe to save, um, my wife's an operational therapist, so she feels, it's kind of like, this would be absolutely fantastic for this family, okay, so, um, yeah. And it's like, I really wanna, cities are recovering, I think, a hundred percent, so, he can, I think, but, because I'm the owner.
But then I'm sitting here thinking, okay, we lost Brad, we took his of all the, our Jason, so our city was working with bare bones, kitchen and toaster, they thought we're helping charge. And so that put a strain on the city, it put a strain on the union, and, you know, if, if we're working on bare bones and just doing, you know, bare minimum of what has to get done, what kind of service are we giving to our, to our members of this community? You know, oh, sorry, this thing got, you know, you know, I have one employee or one and a half employees, you know, sorry, that couldn't get done, we didn't have the employees for it, and now people are upset, well, why do you have the employees? Well, sorry, you know, we couldn't keep them, they didn't like the insurance, we'll turn them off.
With, uh, us as employees.
I don't, I'm not saying that, but I mean, you know, I just-
Us, us as employees, I mean, our job is, you know, protect the city, we take care of the city, and, you know, just these big, you know, catastrophic events or breaks or whatever.
But you did a great job, but things went that way side.
Right.
Because you're working your hand in.
Oh, right, yeah, I was saying, generally, you know, employees, I think that's, that's the show there, that's, that's just our employees, the member, based on their number of residents, uh, or else we have, that's, that's really bad, but, and then you make comparisons, so it's like, you compare us to, going, it's like, yeah, they got higher salaries, they got, I can, I can, if I wanted a job, I'm going, it's like, I have rations of responsibility, I have now, you know, make more money and everything, but, you know, so, it's all power. Get your hands on everything, but that's things that you're doing more work, so, a lot of cities don't have the facilities to, uh, to, so, some of that we can't control, some of it, I will make sure we're competitive, we're, you know, that we, you know, we've got the effort there, I think we are, you know, but, I think I'm hearing it, I haven't heard any different, that, that, you know, we got a hundred, hundred percent employees, and they have got, anything different, and I think from there, can we get better, I think, it's kind of, it's also that. and I think from there, can we get better, I mean, we kind of want to counsel that, I think, my theory gives us right up where we need to be based on what Maggie said, on our city's insurance, say, a hundred percent eighty is, is probably the better, from what I saw from neighboring communities.
Then I'd like to do a hundred percent ninety, but if I knew that we, if we did like a hundred percent eighty in two thousand nineteen, and then jumped to a hundred percent ninety in twenty twenty, I would feel more comfortable because, you know, I get, I get, you know, the kind of focus on that number, where you guys are coming from, but, uh.
I prefer a few steps, but, I don't know, I have to.
I'd like a hundred and eighty. And then, because I think we still have the salaries, the salaries, just to make sure that everybody is in alignment to what their new goals could be in twenty nineteen.
I, I would, yeah, I would be a hundred percent, because we didn't have the number to come into twenty twenty, but making sure that, that had those discussions to be successful, um, but. Maybe we cut back a little bit on the HSA contribution, especially if cities, sports, which, which, totally, not that also, you know, and most people, you know, within two years, they'll be totally up to their, you know, their max ones. Maybe we cut back on that, if it was a hundred percent ninety, maybe, you know, we got to cut back on that, uh, kind of manage it that way, but.
So it's just.
I have a prob, I, I have a little bit of a hang with that, I'll just be interested every year.
So why did we focus on the three thousand and fifteen hundred, what was, was it better?
Uh, I was just kind of looking at what others did, and they usually went half, but I did go above half, so, I mean, I.
So let's say this is like a, a thousand dollar HSA contribution flat per year.
For everybody.
You did like a hundred and eight, hundred and eighty, and then just to like a thousand dollar a year contribution, eighty eight.
So.
Just flat, every point gets a thousand?
Yeah, I'm still, I have a program, I, I never know, I never know, I'm not, I'm not having a half on a back page, I, I wasn't trying to get, I'm not that honest.
Sixteen, fifteen, fifteen.
Yes, because you have a family, so it's fifteen, it's five, I think that matters, at the hundred seventy, thirty seven, eighty, so. That's not to say we can't go further, you know, in the future, I think that's a great, I think that's a great factor, but. Again, I'm, I'm just pretty good with numbers, and that's how I think, and that's how I work.
So that works, so if you're just, if it's just you on the health insurance plan, you get seven hundred fifty dollars, or the fifteen, whatever, whichever one you choose. But if you have a family, you automatically get fifteen, if you have your family on the plan, you get fifteen hundred, and that's how it works.
But your family has to be on the plan, yeah.
Right, but your family has to be on the plan. Okay, I was just, I'm sorry, just, I'm going.
You'd be on the HSA thing.
What, what does that get, what, what does that get?
Um, usually you do it, like, usually you do it every other month, so you do like a, or like quarterly, so you break it up.
Really, I'm more, most of my schedule quarterly or semi annual.
Yeah.
I was going to say, maybe there's a way, maybe we do it like, Blackbird, so there's some, you put your, you know, six, nine, ten.
You still do it semi annual.
But even quarterly, I mean.
I mean.
Yeah, I think you can do it however you want.
Yeah, there's no law, that's just I have to do it.
Kind of quarterly shit, because. Well, in fact, you can, some ideas may, yeah, that you're wanting, you're wanting, you want, you want, how many people, and I don't know if we have to come with.
Oh, no, so, okay, so.
We have to have scenarios, I think, or add a few, questions I need.
Well, let me just summarize what I think I'm hearing, so I get an idea. Okay, so I, I, I feel like you guys are like a hundred eighty with half HSA.
I would do both options.
Oh, do both options.
So do the half HSA and the full?
Do, do, do like a hundred and eighty, and then fully HSA support, which is a three, or half.
Well, that's three thousand and half, six thousand.
Well, she's got the half HSA in that, right.
Okay.
Six thousand.
Fifty hundred individual, three thousand family.
Okay, from another.
So that one, this plan.
That's, sorry, I just, I'm so, I'm.
The half, the half, the half, the half. So for the family, for the family, they have to spend three hundred dollars, once they spend fifty eight hundred dollars, that's.
Or, or the other one.
Oh, you're talking about deductible.
Yeah. Right, so.
Oh, so you can pay your deductible with your HSA account?
How that is, yeah, yeah.
I'm stuck.
You pay your half deductible every year, right, you don't use it one year, now you have your full deductible next year, then you're all over.
Okay, that part I, that takes me a little longer to understand. Sorry, my company just gives me five thousand dollars for out-of-pocket medical, and then February, they write me a check, I just give them all my receipts, and what I paid. But I can't have an HSA, because I'm still to pay.
I mean, eighty percent, you know, a hundred percent, you got eight percent for families, that, all the money that is mine, what, later, okay, or, uh, so, but, uh, with the half, with the fifteen, you know, thirty cents, a hundred percent. Well, I, I. Right, uh, that's kind of back to my point, I don't want to speak for any of the employees.
Right, like, I don't want to put them on a spot, like.
That's, that's why I, I don't want to speak for, for orders either. But we happen to have, we happen to have all four of us sitting here, but me, back to my point, we would be happy with a thirty percent increase, from what they've happened this year, so, I mean, I think it's a great thing to, where it has to be, maybe not, but maybe we can get there in the future, you know, or maybe it's better than we need to be at, I don't know. So, I, I mean, again, I'm not speaking for them, but I think those numbers fail on a general, you know, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, you know, I just see, see right line, what they, or I, I.
I think that gives me. Okay.
Yeah. I don't know.
But if you had HSA free, you'd do that.
But you're better. No, no, you don't pay eighty percent of the twelve.
So if your premium was seven dollars a month, we pay it, if your daughter's premium was two hundred, we pay eighty percent of the two hundred.
Yeah, the other.
And you do have your HSA, you could use tortures, and if you want to, which would be, you know, all of her, which would be, would come with, would come with, right, you know, you get your glasses, you need your, you know, that, and the rights to come for the state insurance, just to come and raise, like.